Um, do we have Coram? Okay, so we should start now for thirty. I never know if you guys are waiting for me to kick it off, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think Alder Martinez Rutherford is in the part, the attendees if.
I can. We ready then to go? Going to start. Today is November twenty six, twenty twenty four, and I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. Um, staff, could you please call the roll?
Yes. President Figaro Cole?
Here.
Vice President Duncan is excused. Alder Govinda Rajan?
Here.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Uguere?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney? Alder Curry?
Here.
You have Coram.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Um, from last, last common council executive committee meeting, do I have a motion for to approve the meetings? So I'm not paying attention to Alder Martinez. I don't know who came first, so.
Uh, Alder Uguere came first.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking at this screen. Thank you. Okay, Alder Uguere, um, for a motion to approve and a second from. From Alder Martinez. Thank you. Um. So do we have any public comment, Karen?
Let's get the, the vote on the record for the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would forget that. I don't know why. Um, is there any objection recording a unanimous vote for the minutes of the last meeting? I don't see any objections. And Karen, I wanted to, so I guess, uh, we were recording unanimous vote for the, for the minutes. Karen, um, I kind of lost my, my. Agility here with the Zoom and the Word documents that I'm looking at or whatever. So i- if you see hands up, can you please help me with that part of it?
Sure.
Thank you. Actually, I may be able to put this on the little corner here. Let me see if it lets me turn this grid into pieces. No, I don't know how to do that. It's moving on. All right then. So do we have any public comment?
We have no one registered wishing to speak. We have one registrant, um, not wishing to speak, and I sent over the, um. The resident report to the committee. An email.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. So we get to the point of disclosures and recusals. We move on to discussion of recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? I don't see any hands. So I guess we'll move on. So we'll move on to items for consideration, and the first item on the agenda is. Agenda item. Eight, six. And I'm not on the right agenda. No, that's not it. Sorry. Give me one second. There you go. Perfect. Agenda item eight, six, two, six, five, overview procedures for censure or removal of an alder. Do I have a motion? Well, actually, this is not, this is a, this is a discussion item, so we don't need, we don't need a motion for this. Um, do we have anybody registered for this item, Karen?
I'm just refreshing in case, just the one, um, not wishing to speak.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I guess I will start this discussion. If that's okay with, um, I don't know if Attorney Has, is Attorney Has in the room? To make sure before I start talking. He's there? Okay, good. So. I'm gonna share my screen. Please let me know if you can see that. And can I, can I hear that you can see it? Again, I don't have, now I minimize the view to you guys.
I can see it now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, um, a, a quick, um. Pre discussion here or, or explanation of the reason for this particular item for, for discussion. I wrote a blog already out, so hopefully you guys had a chance to take a look at that. Um. The intent here is to develop a policy that. The intent here is to develop a policy for the council to, um, not only to understand what Wisconsin statute seventeen means, but to us to be able to formulate a process where we can, we can, um. We can be prepared to act on any, um. Hearing request based on the Wisconsin State Statue number seventeen. So, uh, you have in your, in the legisstar file, you will see a. Um, a link to, to a draft document. And what you're looking in front of you is kind of the same file, except that I went ahead and I incorporated into this file any references that were, that are made to the statue. I would share this with the body after the meeting, but so you all have it. But if you, um, how to navigate those, those statues is just like hover over the Roman numbers and you can see. The definition, a copy paste wording, direct copy paste from the statue into this document. So there is there as a reference. You can also, once I share it with you, you could also, also scroll all the way down to the bottom and you can see all the, the. Um, footnotes for each of those references on the, on the document. Um, I like for today, my goal will be for us to go over this document and discuss the, the proposed, um, procedure that, that we put together. I met with the attorney, attorney has, and attorney Latin, as well as with Karen, to go over, over the statue and then try to define a process. Everything that you see in yellow again comes from the statue, so we wouldn't be able to make changes to, to the, to the statue. Um, direct directive, but the other things are just, um. Are just steps that we're suggesting, are suggesting to be taken in order to, in order of having a, a successful. Successful process for the hearing. So, um, so that's part of the, of the, the main part of this meeting. Another, another, um. Discussion that we wanted to have open on, 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 at this moment is for anyone here, if there, there's anyone here that has any questions about what the difference between a hearing versus a, a censorship means. Uh, we can ask those questions. We're not here to discuss the agenda item that is going to be introduced today. We're just, if anyone has a question specific about what does it mean to censor somebody on what that process looks like, we can answer the, the questions here, but I want to make it very clear, we're not discussing items that are on the agenda for future discussion. Um, so with that. I want to, before we continue, I want to kind of get a sense from the body of how many of you had a chance to look at the document and if there's any questions about the document or, um. We can, if there's no questions, we can have attorney has kind of give us an overview of it and then we can ask questions. I see a question here from Alder Curry.
I have a question. I'm not ready to ask it, but I was gonna say I would appreciate an overview by Attorney Haas. Questions, if that's okay?
Yeah, that is great. Alder, um, you Gary?
Yes, um, just particularly if Attorney Haas is going to, um, take an overview of this. Uh, I, I see the terminology about, uh, verified complaint, but I'm just wondering if the Wisconsin statute limits the sorts of complaints that would have standing for including. You know, does it, uh, does it indicate what could be a frivolous or nonallowed complaint? For instance.
Yep, I think Attorney Haas can cover that on his overview. Um, any other questions? Before we move on with it, his overview? I don't. See any other questions? Attorney Haas, I don't know where you are, but oh, here, I found you. Here you are. Um. He moved. Oh, there you are. Stop moving!
I didn't move at all. I'm just sitting here.
What are you doing? Okay, so, um, I just want to first, again, thank you and, and the team for helping us with some standard operating procedure together and, um. I, I gonna leave it to you to go through this and answer some of the questions that you already have. Is it okay if I leave this up? Do you want me to run through it or you just want to talk about the general process?
Well, I can start with some general comments. I do see Alder Curry's hand up, though.
She does, she's.
Okay. Um, maybe I'll just start with some general kind, uh, comments and then we can get into the specifics. Um. Um, as the president said, I mean, this process is somewhat outlined in the statutes, but it. It leaves a lot of gaps as to the specific steps. So essentially, the statutes say that for an alder to be removed from the council. Um, they can only be removed by the council for cause. And it sets out a basic process of verified, verified charges or, uh, essentially notarized complaint being filed by any resident taxpayer of the jurisdiction. Um, so it's not a process that is initiated by the council. It could be initiated by an individual alder, but there has to be a complaint filed. And then, um. There, there are some steps laid out in the statutes, but the, as I said, there are some gaps, but the basic concept is that we have to have due process for the alder who's the subject of the complaint. And due process simply means a few things. The alder needs to have notice of what the charges are, and they need to have the ability to respond to the charges, to, uh, question witnesses in a hearing, to present evidence on their, their, on their own behalf, and, uh, to basically make a argument about why they should not be, be removed. So that's what this document attempts to do is to still fill in those blanks in the statutes to, um, uh, you know, give the council a framework for conducting a hearing. Um, the other thing I would say is that, as you can imagine, this is pretty rare. Um. I, I'm not aware, I've only been here four and a half years, but I'm not aware that this has been done in Madison before. Uh, I've spoken with my municipal attorney colleagues around the state. Nobody else has, um, provided this type of step-by-step process or, um. Indicated that they've gone through this hearing process before. In addition, besides the statutes, uh, lacking some detail, there are hardly any court cases that interpret the statute or apply it. There is one court case having to do with a police chief who stopped being a resident of the municipality when that was required. Um. So we don't have a lot of guidance, but I think the main principle here to keep in mind is giving all parties to the process an opportunity to present their case, um, and to be heard. And then to, to have the council sit as a decision maker. So one of the main features you'll see here is that the proposed processes would include, um, after the complaint is filed, there has to be a date set by the council. I think it's really, um. Uh, the, I don't think the council would have discretion. I think the council has to set a hearing. If there is a completely frivolous complaint, um, I think the council would have to decide whether it wanted to still go through the hearing process or essentially deny the opportunity to have a hearing and risk the complainant, you know, going to court and asking the court to order the council to have a hearing. But in the normal course, if there are charges, um, brought against an alder for conduct that occurs while they are in office, I think in the normal case, then the, the council would schedule a hearing and, and we are suggesting here that that would be done through a resolution that would itemize or, or detail uh, steps to be taken and authorize staff to do certain things. So we're proposing that the resolution would authorize staff to hire a stenographer, because if this is appealed, uh, first of all, that's a requirement of the statute, and if it's appealed to court, the court will want to see a transcript of the proceedings. Um, and then we're also proposing that the resolution authorize uh, hiring a hearing examiner, somebody who would preside over the meeting to, uh, preside over the hearing. That is not the mayor and it's not the council president. The, um, the council president would be, uh, entitled to sit as a member of the council to hear the evidence and ultimately vote. Uh, so it's similar to a committee of the whole in that regard, uh, except the council president would not be presiding. Um. There is this little wrinkle in the statutes that says that the council could require that the person who files a complaint executes a bond of a thousand dollars as security towards the payment of the hearing cost. So the cities would have costs in hiring the stenographer and the hearing examiner. There might be, if there's other incidental costs, the city would be on the hook for that unless it determines. Unless the council determines at the end of the hearing that the complaint was malicious and did not constitute probable cause, um, under the statutes. If the council decided that, it could order the complainant to pay the cost of the, uh, the, the city's cost for the hearing. And this bond is meant as some security towards payment of those costs. So a bond is typically either the person could, you know, submit, uh, a payment of a thousand dollars to be deposited, or they could purchase a bond from a buying company or an insurance company, um, at some cost to them, but they would not be, uh, posting that thousand dollars upfront. Then the resolution we propose would also include the, uh, the fiscal note for estimated cost. Um. So then, uh, once a resolution is passed, then the statutes require that the, uh, complaint be, uh, formally presented or provided to the alder. Um. We propose that that be presented at least twenty days before the hearing, because the statutes give the alder the right to file a written answer, uh, within ten days of being served with a complaint. So we're provo- proposing here a, basically a twenty day calendar to allow that ten days and allow staff to forward that answer on to the council. So they, the council would have an opportunity to review the complaint and the answer before the hearing. The rest of the process here is really kind of, uh, you know, a standard process for a, a contested hearing, uh, similar to what you would see at a trial. The hearing examiner would be in charge, would call on the complainant to provide any testimony, um, or evidence. And then it's really up to the complainant to say, this is my witness. I would like to have the witness testify. The complainant can, um. Can ask questions of that witness. The complainant can testify themselves. Um. And then after the testimony for each witness, the alder or the alder's legal counsel would have the opportunity to question that witness, similar to cross-examination that we, you would see in a trial. Um, the complaint, it does have the, the burden to establish with the council that they have proven, um. That the standard for cause has been met. Um, and cause again is, uh, defining the statutes as inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct or malfeasance, uh, in office. Um. Those standards, by the way, are really completely separate from city policies or, or, uh, criminal statutes. It's the definition of causing the statute. So there could be cause found regardless of whether any city policy or, um, or state or federal law has been violated. Um, there is another little twist here in, uh, presenting the evidence. Um, we're proposing that as each witness completes their testimony and after they've been questioned by the other side, the council, alders would have an opportunity to ask questions. But to try to keep it organized, we're proposing here that alders would write their questions down, submit them to, um, the hearing examiner, and then the hearing examiner would organize the questions, see if there's any duplicates, and then pose those questions to the witness. It might get a little bit unruly if we had, you know, twenty alders, you know, raising their hands and asking questions of the witness. Um, and the hearing examiner, I think, would tell, so typically be able to, you know, ask the question in, in an appropriate way for a contested hearing. Um, after the complaint, it puts on their, their case, then the alder has an opportunity to do the same thing. They present their witnesses and their, their evidence. Um, they, they would be. They would have the chance to testify, ask their witnesses questions, and then they would, um, their witnesses would also be questioned by the complainant or the complainant's attorney and potentially, um, alders through the same process. Um, there is a provision in the statute saying that anybody who testifies, um. Uh, or, or it says that nobody can be excused from testifying because their testimony may incriminate themselves, but if they do testify, that testimony cannot be used to prosecute them, um, unless they perjure themselves under oath. Um, each of the witnesses would be, uh, put under oath if they testify at this, at this hearing. Um, next, because the complainant has a burden of proof, just as in a, a trial, we propose here that the complainant would have an opportunity for rebuttal. Rebuttal is not going back over all the testimony. It is simply rebutting any of the evidence that has been put on by the alder. Um, and so that is normally more limited in scope. Um. Uh, at that point, all the testimony will be closed. Then the hearing examiner would guide the party through the closing statement process. Um. Uh, we're proposing, um. Uh, that the complainant present their closing statement, and then the alder present their closing statement or their attorneys. And then we're proposing here that the council take a recess. The hearing would be, uh, the evidence and closing statements, all that would be concluded. And we wanted to give alders an opportunity here to kind of collect their thoughts, consider the evidence before they deliberate on, you know, what their findings would be. Um. This would be a, uh, uh, you know, a, uh, an item on the agenda then to discuss. Um, just like any other item, every alder would have an opportunity to present their thoughts. We are. We are proposing here again that um the hearing examiner recognize each alder. For up to six minutes, starting with District One and going through numerically. Um and that each alder be given the opportunities to speak one time for up to six minutes. Um it's important that in a contested hearing like this. The discussion and deliberations be limited to what's what is said in the hearing. And that we don't bring things. Uh into the discussion that have not been presented in the hearing. If they've been in the paper or floating around on social media. If they haven't been part of the hearing, then the alder has not had a res- an opportunity to respond to them. And to have their full due process, so they should not be part of the discussion. So after all the statements have been made by the alder, um then we are um. Uh then any alder can make a motion for removal. If nobody makes a motion for removal, no action is taken. But that's um the point of the hearing is determine whether the alder should be removed. So if there is a motion for removal, um we're proposing that the hearing examiner. Conduct a roll call vote again, starting with the alder for District One. Um re- under the statutes, removal requires fifteen votes, a three quarters vote. Um. Uh now also, uh the questions come up about, you know, uh if there's a conflict of interest. For the alder who's a subject of the proceedings uh to vote. And in our opinion, that alder is able to vote. Um and it is not uh a conflict of interest, they are on the council. And uh we don't believe they should be ex- excluded from voting. Uh similarly, um if there, if the alder is, if the complainant is an alder. We think that alder should be able to vote as well. Um this uh last point here about the determination about whether or not the complaint. Was without probable cause, we might, the committee may want to discuss that. We had some discussion about where that should take place. Uh we have drafted this where the removal question is decided first. Um and then the council would proceed to determine whether the complaint was without probable cause. I think the logic behind that is it keeps the flow of the hearing going. After the discussion, the council takes a vote if there is a motion. That vote may help to inform the next decision about whether the complaint established probable cause. Obviously, if the alder, if there's a vote to remove, that's probably going to be a formality. If if that i- if the council agrees to remove the alder. They are essentially stating that the complaint stated probable cause. If the, but if the council does not remove the alder because there are not fifteen votes, or there's not a motion to remove. Um the council then has a decision about whether there's probable cause. There the council could still determine that there's probable cause. Um even if the alder is not removed. And under the statute, that is supposed to determine whether the city's expenses are paid by the complainant. Um then uh there's just um final procedures outlined in the statutes. To file the certified copy of the order and the transcript uh with the city clerk. And I think that's all we had. Is that true, Madam President? Uh yeah, that's all for the process. And if you care to follow the flow chart of the president, uh that's there as well. So I think that was more than general comments, but I'll uh be happy to answer any questions.
That's, that's actually very good. The only, the only thing I wanted to point out is that. Um others we recognize to speak on the order as they enter the queue. But when we do the final roll call, then we start with the district one.
Hmm, right.
Yeah, more than that. Yep, no, thank you so much for for that. I mean, like, I attempted to do an o- a summary of that on these flow chart. Because Mike said that he likes flow charts a lot, so I did this this just for him. Um so again, it's the process is pretty straightforward, like a regular hearing. You have a complainant, you have the council able to interject after those things. The complainant presents their case, the other respondent will present their case. And then they get to the others again, can the council can again ask questions. Um there's a re- review process by the complainant, closing statements, deliberations. We take a vote and then we do um the paperwork part where we need to file this information with the city clerk. Um with that said, again, thanks, Mike, for for going over the document, really appreciate it. I think I'm gonna. Open this up real quick here to see who was in the queue first. I know I see all the concrete for a while, but let me stop sharing because I'm getting myself confused. Cannot multitask and sue anymore. What happened? Oh god, my other got it. There you go. Already. So allow me a second to open the list. There you go, found it. And we have two people on the list, and yes, Alder Conklin, you were the first one. Please, go ahead with your question.
Uh thank you, Madam President. And Attorney Haas, my question is is about the thousand dollar uh bond or deposit or something. I I just feel like that is a little confusion eh confusion, confusion. I can't even say the word anyway, but I think it just leaves too much to. To guess and see, like, I I just feel like it should be more specific, like, if the complainant. X, Y, Z, then they are required to pay the thousand dollars because. And then you even said, like, the thousand dollars won't be figured out until the end of the court hearing or whatever the case is. I just think that kind of leaves too much, like, oh, you know, you're going along the court process. And we don't find out till the end that you owe a thousand dollars or you may even owe more than that, it sounds like too. So can we just touch on that a little bit and like, what would cause somebody to have to pay the thousand dollars? In the beginning, in the middle, at the end, like.
Right, um no, it's a good question, and and those are provisions that are in the state statute. So we're, you know, the council is required to consider it. But it does not have to require the bond. Um so the the council will have the complaint, can assess it. And, you know, maybe the council, the consensus is that there's a strong case. And it's clear that there's probable cause. And um the council is not even going to require that bond upfront. Um so the council has that discretion to decide upfront whether or not to require that bond. But it is, it is um. It is an option in the statutes, which is why we included it in the in the uh proposed procedures. The council may look at a complaint and say. This, these allegations have nothing to do with the alder's conduct while they were in office. Uh it's going to be very unlikely that we remove the alder in that case. And the city is going to have costs in this. And we want the complainant to be on the hook for those costs. Because we don't think this is uh establishes probable cause. And in the words of it, of the statute, it's willful and malicious. Um maybe clearly, you know, quote political. Um and so it's a tool for the council to use, but it's not required to use it. And on your, your, your last point, um it's impossible to know. Really, we can estimate, but it's would be impossible to know the costs upfront. We'd be estimating what the cost, how long is the hearing going to take? How much time is the hearing examiner and the stenographer going to have to spend? So it might be under a thousand dollars, it might be much over a thousand dollars. So that's just a tool to have some security that at least some portion of it would be paid if the council assesses those charges. So I'm not sure uh what to suggest as far as clarifying it any further than that. Because those are provisions that are in the statutes.
Okay, so could we just say, could we just say that there is a set. Security deposit or retainer deposit or something for for all the cases? I wonder if we can just set that from the beginning and like, look, we need a thousand dollars. You may get some of it back, you may be charged more, but a thousand dollars to start this, so that we have some sort of safety.
Yeah, so, I mean, the council cannot require more than a thousand dollars in security. I think the question about how much you want this to bind. The council in the future is a good question. If if this is placed in the ordinances, it's binding on the council unless the ordinances are changed, of course. If this is just, if these are steps that are adopted by the council as a policy through the resolution. Then a future council could, you know, change that anyway on a case by case basis. Um so, you know, I think the option is there to allow again the council to have the option. Because you have this potential for really extreme cases. And if you say a thousand dollar bond is going to be required, I don't really know what the cost of that is. If it's ten percent or what bond companies charge. You may be.
Yeah, it is usually ten percent.
Okay.
Percent.
So um you may require that and a future council may say, well, in this case, we don't really want to. Re- make that requirement, so that's all a policy decision for the for the council.
Okay, okay. So then one last question, I want to be clear. Um now you said like, this is going to come, like, let's say someone wants to bring a complaint forward. It's going to come to the council first as a whole, and we're going to make the decision whether. This should go forward with the hearing examiner and the the stenographer, is that correct?
Right, correct. I I think, as I said, I I think the statute contemplates that if a complaint is filed. The sworn complaint is filed, there is going to be a hearing. But there is still logistics that have to be set up, the date and all that. And so that's where we propose that that would all be done through a resolution.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. And also, can I add to that question, um then he asked? They wouldn't file with the council, they filed to the clerk's office, right? Like, that's.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Um next person on the queue, thank you, Alder Conklin. Next person on the queue is Alder Ugary.
Uh thank you, I have two questions, President. Uh the, first of all, Attorney Haas, uh I think you partially answered this or maybe completely answered it. In response to Alder Conklin's last question. But this comes from uh in your briefing comments in which you said. That eh the council could decide not to hold a hearing. And that would be uh then uh appealable by the complainant. To a court with jurisdiction, which might indicate that or decide that indeed. Uh the council does have to um comment or have a hearing. Uh but the, so I'm wondering if perhaps there should be some additional clarity in this procedure. In which the council would have to consider whether the complaint meets. The standard set in the statute for in the definition of cause.
Uh thank you, Alder. I, just to clarify, do you mean the standard for cause that is going to be voted on? Or the standard of probable cause that determines whether the complainant pays for the costs?
No, I'm I I I'm talking at the beginning of the procedure as to whether the council is going to go forward with a hearing. They eh and again, um I'm bringing this up because you indicated that a council might decline to have a hearing.
Right, so uh no, it's a good question, the um. Um the, the reason that that determination is made after the hearing is it's. It's not only the complaint, it's, you know, all the evidence that's presented. Um and so I don't think the council can make that determination before. Uh before the hearing. Um and also, um you know, as far as the option to not even hold any hearing. Um you know, I again, I, you're. The that decision could end up in court if it's appealed. I think at that time, likely, you might get some guidance from the city attorney's office. As to, you know, whether or not a hearing should be held. Or the, you know, how strong of a case there is for not even holding a hearing.
I think that uh it clarifies a little further. I'm just looking for whether there should be a, an element under hearing prerequisites. Where the council makes that decision. Uh and makes clear to a future council whether they have the option to decline to go to a hearing. Or whether they're obligated once their complaint is submitted, that they must go.
Well, I mean, item three says a hearing is required to verify charges that are filed. Um I I, you know, I think that's sort of the default. Um I, we could add language, I guess, saying that. If the council does not hold the hearing, decides not to hold the hearing. That that decision could be appealed to court.
I I'm just thinking about a a future council looking at this. And uh trying to determine whether uh the definition in the statute. Uh for cause, uh which would require a hearing, is met. But I I I'm just urging us to think about whether, thinking about uh it, since this is rare. Whether, let's say, five years from now or ten years from now, if this came up. Whether there's sufficient guidance in here for a council on how the procedure should work. But but that's enough. Uh my other question was, is the final decision. Um to remove or not remove, appealable?
Yeah, um it's appealable to court. If an alder is removed. Um yes, they could appeal it to court. A a a complainant, I think, could also appeal the council's decision to court. Um you know, again, there's so, this happens so rarely, there are not a lot of court cases on it. But I think in the one case I cited, the uh the police chief was removed. And um and that was appealed to court, that's why we have a court decision on it.
Yeah, thank you. President answers my questions.
I I do believe incidentally that, you know, once a decision is made, the removal is immediate. There has to be a certified copy of the order filed with the clerk. But I think the removal um happens as soon as the vote happens. Unless the council says the alder is removed as of X date, some future date.
Thank you, um Alder Ugary. We turn off your camera, there's some flickering going on, just so you know. Sorry about that. Um next person on the queue is Alder Bennett.
Hi, so I I mean, maybe getting to what Alder Ugary was asking. I guess eh more so like, i- is there a way like we can put in a threshold to be met for? For a removal, just like, not n- not necessarily threshold, but like definition of what does inefficiency, neglect of duty. Official misconduct, all that mean? Because like, I mean, I can, I'm not saying this is going to happen. But let's pretend there's a situation where a neighborhood is mad at an alder. For voting against, for voting against their wishes for some. For voting against, for voting against their wishes for something. And they decide to put a formal complaint in the city. And then we'd have to go through this hearing process because they're mad at their alder, like. I I don't, I I wonder if there's some sort of. I don't know, definition or threshold that could be met to avoid situations where we'd have to make those decisions.
Um, uh, thanks, Alder. It's a great question because those are pretty vague terms. I think the, um, eh and in the end, it's gonna be the council's decision. I think we can, I think the statute does not, um. Does not contemplate that the way an alder votes meets the cause standard. Um, you know, voters can recall an alder for any reason that is related to their office, so. Uh, an alder could be recalled because people are upset about the way they voted. I don't think that establishes cause. The the four terms again are inefficiency. Official misconduct, neglect of duty, malfeasance in office, so that implies either. You know, neglect of duty and inefficiency to me means the alder is not. Attending meetings, is not responding to constituents, um, you know, things like that that have to do with. How they are conducting their work or not conducting their work. The other two are really. Uh, I would classify more as, you know, bad behavior, malfeasance in office. Or misco- official misconduct has to do with either violating some statute. Um, or some misconduct uh related to their, to their duties. Um, you know, we can maybe put in some examples, um. But in the end, it's going to be what the council deems it to be. And I I think that, I mean, it's a good question if this is, um. Uh, you know, I don't think we can say, put in an ordinance that. Uh, everything that does or doesn't meet the standard. Because it's gonna be based on the facts, um, and because. Those terms are in the statute, so we can't define those terms in a way different than. Like court cases may define them in the future. Um, if now, if it's not in the ordinances, if it's in a policy, maybe we can. Um, you know, suggest some examples. That, but I'm not, I don't think that they would be binding on a future council.
Right, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I just, you know, I can foresee it just like something that. People might want to abuse, which of course they could, they would have to cover the cost, but.
Right.
Maybe it will be helpful to have some examples. Um, I was also going to ask, so would the alder that's. Is the accused have to find their own legal counsel? Or would they find, or would they receive legal services from the city?
No, they would have to find their own attorney.
Okay, and then, um. What are the actions like while they're an alder? What does that mean? Does that mean actions? Taken as relates to what they did while they were acting in their capacity as an alder? Or just any actions they took at any point when they were an elected official?
Um, you know, it's a great question, the, um. The. I think that malfeasance in office can include acts that were not really. Duties of an alder, but might be, um, yeah, either a conviction in some unrelated. Criminal case. Related to conduct while they were an alder, um, or, you know, some other. Um, bad conduct, wrongful conduct that maybe did not include a conviction. Um. You know, I think the, the standard for the council for removal is not. Like beyond a reasonable doubt that an alder has committed a crime. It's the cause danger in the definition that we've discussed, so. There could be evidence that an alder has done something that violated a policy or a law. But they don't necessarily get charged or convicted of it. And the alder can still, or the council can still take all of that evidence into account. When deciding whether or not that standard of cause has been met.
I see. Thank you. Just one last question too, g- not related to removal. Related to censure though, I'm wondering like, I mean, maybe it's particularly. Tight because of the current circumstances, but I'm wondering like what is the threshold for a censure? Like, what does, what, is there anything that needs to be met for a council to choose to censure an alder?
Um, the short answer is no. Censure is simply a means for the council to express its. Its uh sentiments or its feelings, um, about some circumstances or the conduct of an alder. It 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 is not something that is um mentioned in the statute, so it's simply, you know, elders can. Can introduce resolutions about, you know, any topic under the sun virtually. And they do sometimes, and so this is simply a resolution to ask the council to go on record. Um, to say that they, that the council as a body disapproves of the conduct of a specific alder.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Um, next person on the queue is Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have, um, three clarifications that I'd like to make and, um. The first one is is that, um, when you said full due process. Um, uh, how is that determined? Could you kind of expand what that full due process? Means and how do we recognize it and who makes that decision?
Um, well, sure, I mean, I I think as I tried to explain a little earlier. These procedures are attempting to ensure that the alder has due process. Before there is a vote to remove them from their elected position. So due process. Uh, you know, you can dig into the weeds legally, but basically what it means is. You know, this goes back to the founding of our country and what is due process, um, for people to understand. What the accusations are against them, to have notice of that by having a written complaint. And then having an opportunity to defend themselves and to be heard and to present an argument. Um, that's all we're we're trying to do is ensure that, um, both sides have an opportunity. To present their case, present evidence that's relevant, present testimony, you know, question the other side. And then at the end, make an argument about why the facts do or do not meet the standard for removal. So, you know, that that's what we're trying to ensure happens. If there is a hearing in the future through these procedures. There isn't, you know, ultimately, only a judge would decide. If whether or not there's been due process if this got into court. The hearing examiner, practically speaking. Would be the, you know, sort of the traffic cop to try to ensure that that happens during the hearing. So I think if you're asking. How do we, what is the mechanism for making sure it happens? It would be the hearing examiner and the council choosing a hearing examiner that they have confidence will. Protect the rights of all all the parties.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that that summary was a part of the official record. My second question is, um. Around when you said, um, and I I circle decision, um, the council can still. Uh, move forward with probable cause after this process is complete. Um, could you, and I was trying to take notes very quickly, and so once we go through this process. And the hearing examiner, whatever the outcome is, um. What I heard is is that the council still has the opportunity to move forward with. Any process? Did I mishear that or I just need clarification so that I can have that in my mind?
Sure, I eh and and maybe I wasn't eh as clear on that. This whole probable cause notion, it's a separate step. What we're proposing is the council vote on whether the alder is removed. In that case, they are deciding that there is cause to remove the alder. And there's maybe confusion because the terms are similar, but the next separate step would be determining whether. The complainant established probable cause. That, um, that the alder. Alder's conduct met this cause determination, so probable cause is a lower standard. It's it's similar to, um, you know, a police officer. Has to have probable cause to arrest somebody. That doesn't mean that they have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt. That a crime was committed. They need to have enough evidence to conclude that it's more likely than not. That a law was violated. So we would be parsing that out, or the city attorney would be parsing that out. A little bit more when you, when the council got to that step. To explain what probable cause means if it's a close case, um, but. The the statute says a council can then decide whether or not the complainant met this lower bar. Even if the council did not agree that the alder should be removed. So that's why probable cause can be decided even if. The alder, eh even if there are not fifteen votes to remove an alder.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question, um, is, um, what is binding? On future councils, and so I think that that's something that I, I wanna make sure that I'm I'm hearing. It's like. Once we make these, um, decisions for this particular case. What then becomes the binding mechanisms for future councils?
Um, Alder, do you mean as far as the procedures?
The procedures.
Yeah, so, you know, even if we, even if the council did not adopt procedures. We would still be subject to the statutes and the statutes. You know, lay out some of the basics of this process, but not all of the step-by-step process. So, first of all, the statutes would be binding in the council. Uh, there would still have to be a com- sworn complaint and still a hearing, um. And this determination about bond and so forth. Um, now, at the city level. If this is placed in the ordinances, then those are, um, binding on a future council. Unless a future council amends the ordinance, um, if it's, um. Uh, similarly, if if these policies are adopted simply by resolution. Or these procedures are adopted by resolution, that would be binding until. Uh, unless a future council again changes those procedures, um.
So, so thank you. I, those are the, I just wanted to make sure that that was a part of the record. Thank you, Attorney Haas. I'm complete.
Thank you, um, Alder Harrington McKinney. The next person on the queue is Alder Miyatsi.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Haas. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. What are the consequences if an alder? Provides false, misleading information during, uh, the process, the hearing process?
Well. Uh. Are you, do you mean, wh- if, the, do you mean while they are testifying or while they're in discussion?
And discussion, testifying. During the process.
Well, eh, anybody who is under oath, if they provide false testimony. That could be prosecuted as perjury. If they, you know, and then also separately from that, whether or not. An alder is under oath or anybody is under oath for that matter, if they make false statements. They could be sued for defamation or or libel. I mean, those are the legal consequences, potential consequences of making false statements.
What about even leading up to a censorship, alders or alders are, and and it's a basic. Dispation of that?
It it's, eh it's the same answer. If people, there is not any like city. Uh, you know, police that regulate what alders say or don't say. If if, uh, there are false statements made, the legal consequence for that. The council can take these actions we've been talking about. Or somebody could be taken to court, but that is a private cause of action. That's not something that the city or the city attorney's office would get involved in. The, if if there are false statements made by an alder. The person who is the subject to those false statements would have to sue them for defamation. If they're under oath, it's possible that it could be perjury.
Thank you.
Um, do you have any other questions? You have still other, my answer.
Well, thank you, uh, President. I'll conclude it.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Haas, I have a quick question, um, cause this is something that we discussed on when we were working on this process. Can you define, um, court examiner or whatever is the term that we that we use in here? Um, yeah, hearing examiner, can you define, um, what, what is? What does that mean and what you're proposing that could be?
Sure, I mean, that that's a person that would, um, really be taking the place of a judge. So this would be considered what we call a quasi judicial hearing. Has a lot of the elements of a trial and the hearing examiner is a neutral party, first of all. Who can conduct the hearing, as I said, sort of be the the traffic cop, um. You know, they need to know basic legal proceedings and the rules for. For what due process is and how a hearing is conducted, so that, you know, typically. You know, means you may wanna be looking at an attorney who is schooling those procedures. It doesn't necessarily have to be an attorney. Um, in Wisconsin, we have municipal court judges. Who are not required to be attorneys, um, and that happens quite frequently in some communities. But somebody who is capable, first of all, understands legal proceedings. And is capable of keeping control of a contested hearing. Um, and is also neutral and unbiased, I think those are the qualities you'd be looking for.
Thank you for clarifying that. It's not anyone just walking up the street, it's someone that has the the skills to manage a hearing. Um. I don't see any other hands on the queue. I see there's a attendant in the room with their hand. Raised, Karen, can you please verify, um. It does a late registrant, please?
Uh, yes, there was a late la- late registrant on item number two with the name of James Bennett, and there's someone with the name of James Bennett in the attendees list.
Okay, so, um, this is for item number two, is there a, I I, we usually do take registrations after discussion, so. I I think it's appropriate to do that unless, um, anyone on the body objects, but. Is that right? I mean, can, I wanna make sure, like. Is it okay to take this person down or do I have to special vote or can I just go ahead and and uh have him speak?
Request the ju- uh vote.
Okay, so is there any, any, um, objection to have the registrant, um, speak for three minutes on item two? Please, um, go ahead and do. Please um go ahead and do a roll call on Karen.
Uh excuse me, Chair. Uh I don't believe Alder Harrington McKinney is even in this.
Yes, she is. She's a member. Yeah, let's just take it. Let's, yeah, let's take a real quick. Karen?
Vice President Duncan is excused. Alder Vic- uh Govindarajan?
Can we clarify what yes and no means? Sorry.
Yes means allow the registrant.
Late registrant to speak.
To speak for the three minutes. No means do not.
Thank you. I vote yes.
Alder Govindarajan, yes. Alder Conklin?
Yes.
Alder Conklin, yes. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Yes.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, yes. Alder Uguere?
Yes.
Alder Uguere, yes. Alder Harrington McKinney? I'm sorry. You're muted.
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney, yes. Um and then because Alder or because Vice President Duncan is excused, Alder Curry, you're voting tonight. Yeah, um. I'm sorry. Yes, Alder Curry, yes. Um that's one. Six yeses.
Okay, so um. Thank you. With that said, um. The, I don't know, start um someone can unmute um Mr. Bennett. Yes, we can hear. You have three minutes to speak on the item on the um regarding the procedure that we're working on for. For hearing. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a few concerns. I'm gonna try to run through them. Since I only have three minutes here and then maybe the city attorney can respond to them. Um first question is, uh what is uh? Uh admissible evidence or non-admissible uh in uh putting in or filing a complaint? Uh that that's one question. Uh the second question is. Uh and I believe one of the uh alders addressed this, uh that is uh statements of fact. Uh that are true or untrue. Um would those be considered uh interference? And if it is, uh how do we rectify that? Uh so that we can minimize in- interference. Uh you know, uh in other words, politicking, trying to get people to slant toward one. One way or the other. Um. The next one here is the preponderance. Is this the case of preponderance of the evidence or this is intend beyond any reasonable doubt? That the person committed this and committed that. Uh what uh is is to be shown there? Uh those are my questions.
Uh thank you, Mr. Bennett. Um.
Yes. Are you able to hear me? Hello?
We got it. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Well, yeah. Thank you. Um Attorney Haas, do are you able to answer some of those questions, please? I think we covered most of them.
Sure, I can try to. Um. Uh as far as uh, you know, relevance, um. You know, I think the hearing examiner could help if there, you know, it's. It's a contested hearing, so there might be objections to testimony or evidence. That one party makes. And I think the hearing examiner then would would make rulings about whether or not. The evidence is is relevant. Um. Uh secondly, I think the question was about. You know, false statements or something to that effect. I mean, this is a contested hearing, so of course. People are gonna try to be, will try to convince. The council of their point of view. So obviously, everybody's not gonna be on the same page. Um. So but those statements, if they're under oath or they're in a complaint. They're gonna be subject to cross-examination and the other side will have an opportunity. To try to draw out what information is false or not credible. Or put it into context. So that's. You know, one of the points of due process is to give both sides an opportunity to flesh out those. You know, what is true and what is not true. Um and the last question is the the standard is not beyond a reasonable doubt. It's just a finding. It is there cause under the statute? Does one, has one of those four standards been met? Um the the statute doesn't talk about. Uh you know, a legal standard that you think of in court of. Um preponderance of the evidence or beyond a reasonable doubt. It just says the council makes a finding of whether or not there's cause. And I think the council would want to keep in mind. That ultimately its decision. Could end up in front of a judge for a judge to determine whether or not that cause. Is uh standard is met. So it's like a lot of, you know, you hear our attorneys advise a council. Often when it is voting on things that can be appealed to court. Sometimes uh in zoning especially. Or variances, it has to be based on judgment. Not what the council, not what we call the council's will or what it wants to happen. But based on the evidence and realizing that that can always be appealed to a court. And if it's not based on the evidence. A judge could reverse the decision and say the alder has a right to stay in office.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Um. Okay, so. Are there any additional questions for Attorney Haas on this topic today? This is gonna be a, this is a working document. It's not finalized yet. I would like to bring this back up in the future meeting to to further discuss and I like to also attempt to create some. Kind of document that provides a different methods the city has to. To bring complaints in, like the code of conduct and and. The ethics board and now this particular procedure. So this is not the end of the conversation, but if you have any questions today. Um please let me know. And Attorney Haas, what can I help you with? Go ahead.
Thank you. I I I forgot when we were talking about the probable cause determination at the end. We had some internal discussion about whether. It would be best to make that. After the removal decision is made or before. And I I I attempted to explain what their arguments are for having it after that removal decision. But if the committee has any thoughts or preference. For when that probable cause determination should be made. If it's different than what we had outlined. We would be interested in in hearing that. Otherwise, I think if this goes forward, we would be. Proposing it as is outlined.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Um I think like one. Just gonna show my screen again real quick. For this particular document. I think um. Uh one thing that I really wanna add based on the discussion that we currently had is just add some. Glossary, so we have some of the terminology that you just defined, have them have them incorporated as part of the standard operating procedure. But um but anything on this document that again I will share with you guys, um that is not. That is not highlighted in yellow, we are we are kind of look looking for your feedback. Um trying to. Make sure that we have covered as much as possible. Um. And trying to make this process as as strong as as we can make it be. But again, things that are that are in yellow, those are coming directly from the statute. We're looking for your feedback on anything else that um that is a process step on this document. So. Totally welcome. I will I will send information and and I will. Probably put this back on the agenda in January so we can digest over the holidays and and have a a conversation before we move it into council. So I'm gonna stop sharing and go back to the screen here. Oh, there you go. And I see some more questions. Okay, um so. Alder Parenta McKinney, you have a question?
Uh yes, Madam, uh not on the process, but uh my question um is I I I want the chair to clarify. Um who is able to speak in these sessions? And who is eligible to speak? And I I bring that up for clarification because Alder Conklin. Seemed to challenge me when I had my hand up and to make a comment. So I just wanna be clear from the chair. Who is who um is eligible to speak in these processes?
So it, sure. So any alder is eligible to speak on any committee processes. But only the committee members are eligible to make motions to make motions and request a roll call or request. Or vote on the on the meetings. But anybody can speak um and contribute to the discussion of of any agenda item in the meeting. Does that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Alder Curry?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been having some audio issues, so cut me off. Um I may have missed this, sorry, but thank you for going through. Um. The depth of preparation for this and also what's in statute versus what we have control to to change at this time. I may have missed it, um but I have a question about the who can bring forward a complainant. And I'm assuming becau- by identifying only city. Only resident taxpayer of the city of Madison. Is that in regards to the costs um that are associated with proceedings as such? Or can you give any insight about that?
Attorney Haas, I'm gonna leave this one for you. I know we uh we discussed that too.
Yeah, I but I'm not sure I understand the question. The 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 statute says a resident taxpayer can can file a complaint. So Alder Curry, what was the question?
So I I'm I guess I'm asking why just that identification and kind of saying I can assume this, but just clarification wise. Why only can a s- Madison, city of Madison resident bring forth a complaint?
Yeah, well, uh I'm not exactly sure. It's a little unusual, I think, for the. For the statute to say it has to be a resident taxpayer instead of just a resident. It's unclear whether taxpayer means. Property taxpayer or income taxpayer or sales taxpayer. We haven't really had to cross that bridge yet. Um it it seems pretty clear, I think, that the resident part of it is those are the people that. That vote for the council and that the all those are representing all the residents. Uh I'm just, I'm not exactly clear on why it needs to be a taxpayer, but that's a requirement of the statute.
Yeah, I also like to point out that I, even though it's a little bit confusing, but the taxpayer kind of expands to everything. It actually says resident, so it doesn't say. Like legal status style, you know, it's the, I I mean, I know Mike said about. The people that vote, but I think it's actually saying the people that you represent, that that body represents. So we represent the city of Madison. The council, so that whoever that body represents has the right to put a complaint in. So it doesn't have to. You know, and when it says taxpayer, it kind of leaves it open to any kind of tax. Doesn't say which tax. So.
Okay, um. Since this isn't a voting item and is a living documents, can um I probably missed this too in your summarization, but. Who do we reach out to with suggestions on changes?
Um I think if you send them to me and C C Karen, we are kind of working on this together. That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And and again, don't, yeah, send it individually so we don't do the quorum thing. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. Oh, I'll do a complaint. I spoke to some.
It won't take long. And I and I just wanna say that I wasn't trying to challenge anybody. I just want the records to state that. It it unfortunately, Alder McKinney does not have the little hyphen in front of her name that usually shows us who's a part of the um. Committee, so that's why I was just confused and I wanted to make sure. So that's all. Thank you so much.
Already, thank you, Alders. It's six o'clock about and I am so glad that we use. Most of the time to actually dig into these into these changes. Um so we purposely didn't add any other. Relevant items to the agenda. Uh to make sure that we had enough time for the discussion. The next item on the agenda is future. Future um meetings, but you can go ahead and send those via mail to Karen or I and we'll. We'll take them under consideration. So with that said, um I am going to. Wait, what am I doing here? Oops, sorry. I am go- going to go ahead and skip to. Um a motion for adjournment then. It does okay with you guys.
Kinney so moved.
Um and it's taken by Alder Martinez. So is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote on adjournment? I don't see any hands raised. Thank you. Um so yeah, thank you. Thank you for the for for the good discussion and see you in a few minutes in council. Have a good afternoon. Bye bye.